Wait a minute. What's the new guy? He ain't sitting out there.
Travis.
I don't know.
Did he know about the special meeting?
I haven't met him yet.
Who knows? Who knows?
No, I was talking about, uh...
I shaved it off this... I shaved it off this morning. Hey, Newberry got them high numbers.
Hey, dear.
Johnny Mac, like my dad, tell my daddy when he die, I'm gonna make the nurse sit on side road till it's fifteen minutes late and then ring him in so somebody knows him.
Yeah, he did some buddies play that game.
He want him there at five, you gotta tell him before thirty. I don't know where he got that from, 'cause my granddaddy was an Air Force guy and he didn't tolerate that stuff.
There he is.
There he is.
All right, it is time for our meeting. We will call our meeting to order and we are going to ask... No, the invocation is later, I apologize. First things up is the Honorable Eugene Griffith Junior is going to administer the oath of our new councilman, Mr. Carl Sees. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we gotta do all of them. Are you gonna do them all each one separately or all at once? One at a time, okay?
Same as you said. What's the funeral most often?
It's all. Sees, can you place your left hand on the floor, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state. To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And to preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Sees. Congratulations and welcome aboard. It'll be an honor to serve with you. Take your seat. I believe Reverend Scurry was next on the list if I looked at it correctly. I know you get a possible.
Amen. Nice meeting you. I've seen you. Sitting in the back.
Raise your left hand. Raise your right. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the... To the office.
To the office.
Which I've been elected.
Which I've been elected.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of this state and the United States.
Of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Mr., the Honorable Travis Reader will be the next to be sworn in.
Go, mama. Just go where she says go and it'll go better. Follow it. Follow it.
Repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We welcome Mr. Sees and are excited about the opportunity to work with you and we welcome back Mr. Reader and Reverend Scurry and we thank God for both of you and what you have done and will continue to do for this county. So we're thankful for all three of you.
Thank you.
Having said that, we will turn the meeting over to our vice... Uh, yeah, you still vice chair until we have the elections. Vice Chair Mr. Les Hill for our implication and pledge.
Let's stand and bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, you've entrusted this group.
Yes.
To represent the citizens of this county. We ask that you assist us by directing us to make sure that we represent and honor the responsibilities that have been bestowed upon us.
Yes.
And we ask these things in Christ's holy name, amen.
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 A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the meeting will now be turned over to our county attorney who is joining us by Zoom for the election of our officers for the 2023 calendar year. Ms. Winters, it is first off and foremost, thank you for joining us. Our prayers go out for your husband and for you as you take care of him and we appreciate you going above and beyond to be with us tonight given the circumstances, so what a blessing.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate council's consideration of allowing me to attend via Zoom. Um, and, and so as you said, we'll be doing an election of, of the chair for 2023 and then following that we'll do the vice chair for 2023. And so, um, turning to the election for the chair for 2023, are there any nominations?
I nominate Les Hill for chair.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr., Mr. Reader?
I nominate Les Hill for chair.
Okay, Mr. Hip has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I nominate Todd Johnson to continue since, uh, he's just had his first year and got a lot of things to continue to do.
Okay. Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Hip and Mr. Johnson. Any other nominations?
I make a motion, nominee to come to a close.
Thank you, Reverend Scurry. Okay, we'll now, um, take a poll of council for your vote. Uh, Reverend Scurry, if we could start with you?
Big part, I didn't hear what you said.
Um, who would, who would your vote be cast for, Reverend Scurry?
Todd Johnson.
Todd Johnson. Mr. Reader, your vote?
Todd Johnson.
Mr. Hip?
Um, I believe, uh, based on what I hear that, uh, we're gonna have Mr. Johnson continue and he has done an excellent job in the past year and, uh, since I see that, uh, he has a majority at this point, I would like to, I appreciate, uh, the nomination by Mr. Shealy, uh, but I would like to see that we unanimously, uh, support Todd Johnson.
Okay, so then, then would you be declining the nomination for the chair, Mr. Hip?
Uh, yes.
Respectfully, I...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so leaving Mr. Johnson as the only nominee, can, can we see a show of hands of those voting for Mr. Johnson? And from what I can see, it does appear to be unanimous. Okay. Um, can I ask the clerk to confirm that? Ms., Ms. Fellers, can you confirm that for me for the record?
Yes, they all voted for, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you so much. Okay, that, that makes Todd Johnson the chair for 2023. Then we'll move on to the election of a vice chair for 2023. Any nominations for vice chair?
I make a nomination that Les Hill, um, be vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. Arrowood. Um, any other nominations for vice chair?
I make a nomination to come to a close.
Thank you, Reverend Scurry. Uh, so since we have one nominee, can I see a show of hands for Mr. Hip to be the vice chair for 2023? And it would appear that that is also a unanimous vote. Ms., Ms. Fellers, can you confirm that for the record for me?
Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So then we have Mr. Hip as the vice chair for 2023. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the election.
Thank you so much, Yoni, for handling that. Um, and, uh, I, I'll take a moment and then, uh, let Mr. Hip have a moment. Just thank you for your trust in me. Um, I hope that we will continue to have the kind of spirit of unity that we've experienced in the past year and we'll continue to do great things for Newberry County. Uh, I, I am humbled and I don't take lightly the trust you placed in me as your chairman. Mr. Hip, anything you wanna say?
Uh, also, I want to thank everybody for, uh, their support for me for vice chair, uh, your confidence in me and I will, uh, do everything I can to make sure that, uh, that confidence is well placed. Thank you.
Is there anything that leads us to our adjournment unless there's any other business that someone has? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adjourn until our six o'clock meeting? Motion by Mr. Sees, welcome aboard, he jumped right in. Right, I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Shealy's gonna be... You had to race him now to get to that adjournment. We're gonna call you the second on that one since you were right behind him. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we're gonna give you a few minutes to fellowship with those who are in attendance for the swearing in and then we'll get down to the business of the people at six o'clock. Uh, all in favor of adjourned, by show of hands? It is unanimous, we stay in adjourned till six.
All right.
Good.
Comedy time.
All right, it is time for our regular call meeting, so we'll call the meeting to order. We are so glad to see each of you here. We will certainly do it again, but we recognize our honorable representative and his lovely bride on being with us tonight, and so we thank you. We have former Councilman Scott Kane and his wife here with us tonight, so we're just honored to have you all with us as well. So I want to recognize you both as we come around. Mr. Hip, would you again lead us in our invocation and pledge, please?
Okay, we'll do it again.
Do it again. One more again.
Please bow your heads as we go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, please give this group the wisdom to make the right decisions that leads our county forward in the best possible way for the citizens of this county, and we ask these things in Christ holy name, amen.
Amen.
Let the name of Jesus be the flag of the United States of America and his republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda, as I said, is Representative Joe White. We're excited to have you represent our community and excited about the great things that we know you will do, sir, so you take over and talk as long as you like, as long as you don't go over two minutes.
You didn't even hear that part.
I was scared to see what you had in that box.
During the campaign, found out what my number one agenda item was as I was campaigning, and it hasn't quit being my number one agenda item. Did I give you all one?
Not yet.
You don't want to get cheated, do you? I don't want you to cheat. Okay, if you want the best. Run out, we'll get it. First of all, I want to thank council for allowing me this opportunity. Some of the people on council met me during the campaign, and they know that I'm the most unusual person that has ever run for public office in the state of South Carolina. I'm a seventy-six-year-old guy that never ran for office before in my life, but I really have a heart for my country, for my state, and it's felt like that I need to step up. As I began to, and I want to thank y'all for allowing me to come and speak tonight, and thank y'all for coming. About two years ago, I began to realize an issue in South Carolina that's hard to get anybody's attention about, and that issue is crime, law enforcement, and our judicial system. So I'm going to hand out another handout, which tells you what each one of these links in that chain stands for, and you dispatch those out.
Yes, sir.
Each link in that chain stands for something. We've got ten links in a chain in our judicial system, and that's what each one of those links stands for. When a crime is committed, you've got a victim, you've got a suspect, eventually you have an arresting officer, you have an investigation, you have a magistrate that gets involved, a bail bondsman that gets involved, a defense attorney that usually gets involved, a prosecuting attorney that gets involved, circuit judge that gets involved, and a solicitor that gets involved. For the last six months, I've talked to all those people. I've talked to magistrates, when I was here tonight, Gordon, where was it Gordon? Went and talked to Gordon, talked to Barry. I've talked to our solicitor, David Stumbo. I've talked to defense attorneys, I've talked to prosecuting attorneys, and I'm going to go through this, and I'm going to hand out one more thing. This has let you see what I have learned in my last six months of trying to talk to all these people about the justice system in South Carolina. I hope most of you know that the justice system in South Carolina is done in a way that no other state doesn't. We're the only state in America that does our justice system the way we do our justice system. And I think if we were doing it the right way, there'd be some people that'd copy us. So I know that I'm up against an issue that is almost an impossible issue to try to do anything about, but those of you who, anybody who's known me understands that I've always tried to do the impossible. I don't believe in trying to do what's easy, I believe in trying to do what's impossible. So I want you to look at that little comic book thing that I have there. I want you to begin to realize how our judicial system works in South Carolina. A crime is committed, and according to our judicial system in South Carolina, within twenty-four hours, that person has a right to be in front of a magistrate. They have a bond hearing, and at the bond hearing, our magistrate has to make a decision. Do we hold him? Do we release him on personal recognizance? What do we do with this guy? And a lot of times, they don't even have time to find out any background on this guy. If a guy gets arrested at eleven o'clock at night, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, he's going to be in front of a magistrate. Well, he may have committed crimes in California or Arizona or somewhere, and they do a great job of getting all the information they can, but within twenty-four hours, they have to be in front of a magistrate. Our governor right now is wanting to change that system. He says our bail bond system and this system needs to be fixed. So I have the governor on my side on this particular piece because the bail bond system that is in place right now in South Carolina and the twenty-four-hour thing is causing problems in our judicial system. That's the first step. If you flip the page, after that, he has to decide a bond amount. Let's say he decides a bond. Let me give you two cases that happened just recently. One, I went to Judge Bubba Griffith's court, sat in on courtroom, he did five plea bargains that day, and it just so happened that one of the plea bargains was a guy that was a friend of mine, a guy that had worked in my yard, a guy that previously had seven DUIs. On the eighth DUI, he stole a truck from another friend of mine, ran up seventy-six, crossed the lane, and hit a sixty-two-year-old woman head-on, he killed her. But it was the eighth DUI, the eighth DUI. There's no reason that guy should have been constantly released and released and released until he committed the eighth DUI, which is a tragic death. About two weeks ago, in York County, none of us ever know the details of these stories, so I don't know right or wrong, whether it's right or wrong, but I'm just telling you what happened. A young policeman got into an argument at a bar with a retired policeman. When they finished the argument, the retired policeman went home. The young policeman followed him to his house, went into his house, beat him up, killed him. The next day, he's in front of a magistrate, he's released on $250,000 bond. Within twenty-four hours of the time he killed a retired policeman, he's out on bond. I don't know whether that's right or wrong, all I know is it doesn't sound right. We had a case here recently, and I've talked to a lot of people about this. Who knows what's right or wrong? Only magistrate or judge can really make those decisions, but it looks like sometimes that our system is not working right. It's not working to keep us safe. So the next thing that happens, he comes in front of a magistrate, magistrate may say $200,000 bond, $100,000 bond, $10,000 bond. A bondsman shows up, gets the guy out, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Gordon, a lot of times these bondsmen take a down payment and say, pay me month.
They are regulated by the state, the whole lot.
That's right. So you commit a crime, when I started going down this trail, I asked Sheriff Foster, I said, would you give me the names of people that committed at least four serious crimes in Newberry County in the last three years and are out right now? He gave me a list, had sixty-nine names on it, that committed at least four serious crimes. I'm not talking about DUIs, I'm talking about assault, rape, attempted murder, things like that, burglary, four times in the last three years, and they're out walking the streets of Newberry right now. When I was campaigning, I asked Mayor Sin, I said, tell me about your crime problem in Newberry. He says, well, Joe, I'll tell you the truth. He says eighteen people commit eighty percent of the crime in Newberry County. I said, huh, eighteen people have $10,000, commit eighty percent of the crime. Seems like maybe we can find a system that can get those people off the street. That's all I'm saying. So anyway, we go to the bondsman, that's the next step. If he says no bond, then what does the guy do? Turn to the next page. He goes against an attorney. The attorney's going to go to circuit court somewhere else and try to overturn what the magistrate just decided, no bond, try to get him out. So if he overturns it, guy's back out on the street, turn to the next page. If they actually end up in front of court, and that attorney can find a flaw in the investigation, guess what? He's free again because they found a problem in the investigation. Turn to the next page. You got a prosecutor, and I said, that day I went to court, and a friend of mine was there, by the way, he did get twenty years that day. After eight times, he did get twenty years, sent down to Columbia for a while. But on the next possibility is a plea deal. Y'all think about a plea deal. Plea deal's a good thing. It saves us a lot of money, we don't have to go to court, but if you don't have a good prosecuting attorney, you're going to get an easy plea deal. If we don't have a good prosecuting attorney to go to court here, if the defense attorney knows that we've got a weak prosecutor, they know they're going to get an easy plea deal instead of a tough plea deal. The twenty years for the guy, I think was a good plea deal. I think Bubba Griffith did a great job that day. So I'm just saying, the next step is that plea deal step, and then if they don't settle on a plea deal, we go to the last page. Then you've got a jury of peers that has an opportunity to say, this guy is not guilty. So along the way, any link in that chain that is weak, the criminal has the benefit. Any link in that chain that's weak, the criminal has the benefit, and we've got weak links in that chain all along the way. I'll tell you what I'm doing, I've already submitted two pieces of legislation to try to get some of that changed, and I'm going to challenge the council, I'm going to give them a sheet, give them something that they need to be doing. Here's what I've done so far. I've introduced two bills to deal with problems in our judicial system. I've been talking with magistrates, defense attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, circuit judges, solicitors, sheriffs, and police chiefs. I'm sitting in on bail bond hearings, I'm sitting in on plea bargain trials. I have, when I open my office, I'm going to have an office down here at the Par Building, room four-ten, y'all come see me. I'm going to have mug shots of the repeat offenders, I'm going to keep a book in there with the mug shot of the repeat offenders, and anytime you want to come down there and see who they are, I'm going to have their pictures, okay? I'm asking county council to do a few things. Gordon's about to retire, isn't that right, Gordon? This year, right? I'm going to ask you to help our Senator Ronnie Cromer find a good magistrate to replace Gordon, a good magistrate, somebody that will be tough on crime. I'm asking y'all to help Ronnie Cromer find a good place, person to replace Gordon. You know, the way the system is, your senator gets to decide who the next magistrate's going to be. We've got good senators in South Carolina, and we've got some bad senators in South Carolina. Bad senators get a lot of bad magistrates, good senators get good magistrates. I'm asking y'all to help Ronnie come up with a name of somebody that can be a good magistrate, so that first link in the chain, or the third link after the victim So that first link in the chain, or the third link after the victim and the suspect, that first link in the chain is a tough link, a tough link to get around. Now I'm going to ask you to work with the governor. Write a letter to the governor, say, "We support this bail bond reform that you're trying to get done." I want Newberry County Council to tell the governor, "Newberry County wants that bail bond reform. We want it so that the magistrate has more than 24 hours to get his case together. We want it so that the bail bond can't take down payments and get $100 a month. We want to toughen this bail bond situation." I want you to make every bail bondsman in Newberry County abide by every law, rule, and regulation. Enforce those rules. Have you ever seen a bond excreted in your lifetime? You have seen some excreted.
Okay.
Not all.
A lot of people don't know what a screening of bond is. But if somebody doesn't show up for court, and they're out on $10,000 bail, the bail bondsman's supposed to come with $10,000. Isn't that right?
He's producing personal money.
Even personal money. You know how frequently that happens? What, one out of 100?
Not often.
Not often. So make them excrete that money. You know why two of the bail bondsmen in Newberry County went out of business during COVID? Because they were all put out of personal recognizance. They couldn't make any money. You know? We were given orders, don't lock anybody up. And so the bail bonds, two of them went out of business because they were crooked. They were crooked bail bondsmen. I want you to challenge our magistrate, circuit court judges, when you believe their decisions are not the best for the county. I want you to go to them and say, "We think that was a bad decision." You know? It's your decision, but we think it was a bad one. If you think they make a bad decision, I want you to go to them and tell them you think it was a bad decision. I want you to work with Solicitor Stumbo to ensure that he has the dollars necessary for quality trial prosecutors and the dollars necessary to have full-time investigator for Newberry County. Right now, we don't have a full-time investigator for Newberry County. The sheriff's department does a great job. Robert's back there, they do a great job. But Newberry County needs a full-time investigator under Stumbo so that when they have a case that's going to come to the court, that they can actually prosecute the case and have a good solid investigation. I'm asking you for dollars. I'm asking you for a few dollars, not a lot of dollars. But I'm asking you to think about giving some dollars to Stumbo. So I'm going to leave you all with that. That's all I have for you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council?
Thank you for all the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Sounds like you've done a lot of homework.
The only thing I would suggest that you left out is that the senator often appoints that magistrate, then practices law in front of him as an attorney. Yes, sir.
That's the problem that the legislature has. There's things the county can do that the legislature has no control over. There's other things that the legislature needs to do. We begin to fix that system.
Obviously, being a pharmacist, we don't have that situation, as Judge Johnson correctly points out. But traveling the state, I assure you, that happens.
No, I'm just saying that... Judge Johnson's my friend. When I went...
Our senator is a businessperson and not a lawyer, and that has been a boon for Newberry County in the legal system. And everybody can make their own mind about it. But I have seen it in other counties where their senators never go to court, dodge.
That's what I'm talking about. My bill, I don't want to push along with this. My bill is to ask that the senator give at least two names to the governor and let the governor decide which one he wants. If it's corrupt, you can still give two bad names and make sure... But also put in the bill that the governor could reject both of them. See, the Constitution says the governor, with the advice and consent of the Senate, will appoint magistrates. But it's gotten to where, as Gordon knows, the governor just takes whoever the senator says and says rubber-staple it and send it on through. So I'm asking that the governor be given at least two names, and if he doesn't like either of the names, he'd be able to reject both of them.
Well, what I add is the magistrates meet certain... They have to meet certain qualifications.
Right.
They can't just be anybody. You have to have their certain qualifications. And they're all published in the state statute. Very easy to look up. You have to meet certain qualifications. And still do, and still take continuing aid of whoever you...
The 2008, he just took an associate's degree. Now it takes a bachelor's degree to be a magistrate. So anyway, appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Representative White, thank you so much, sir.
And y'all, trust me, I'm working hard for you.
It's clear. Just this research is a lot of work. Item number two on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Those... The consent agenda consists of the Newberry County Special Call Meeting of December 7th, and then the regular council meeting of December 7th. Is there objection for doing these as one motion?
No.
No objection? Is there a motion? We approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Reverend Curry. Is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise? The motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is the addition or deletions of items on the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Reverend Curry, second by Mr. Sees. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise? That motion carries unanimously. Item number four on our agenda is Resolution Number 01-23, which is a resolution to endorse USC Supportive Housing Services, application to provide housing opportunity for people with AIDS, also known as HOPWA, services to residents of Newberry County. The resolution was included in your packet. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review it. Is there a motion related to this resolution? Motion that we endorse this resolution? Is there a second? Second by Reverend Curry. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion by show of hands. All opposed likewise? The motion carries unanimously. Item number five is a consideration of creating a capital fund in Economic Development Fund using FLO revenues. Man, you're quick as lightning. I didn't even call your name, and you were already there. You rock. Just so that everybody is abundantly clear, this is the beginning of a process where we'll create a draft and come back. This... The resolution that we have is simply a draft. It is not in any way meant to be the final resolution for the county. So just so that everybody is abundantly clear about the information we're hearing and receiving.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. For the record, I'm Rick Farmer, the Director of Economic Development for Newberry County. What we've done is we've made a copy. I don't believe you've actually seen the text of the...
We have. I thought it was handed... Yeah, we've got it. It was handed out during the break.
Oh, okay, yes. The point of my being here was to introduce you to this proposed legislation to get you thinking about the details of this. Now, I don't believe anything has changed since the last time the former administrator briefed you on this. What this legislation would do, of course, is create a capital projects fund and an economic development fund using fee-in lieu of tax revenue. Under the law and under the multi-county industrial park agreement with Greenwood County, Newberry County has the ability to repay itself for costs incurred when recruiting a new industry and preparing for that new industry. Generally speaking, the way we've done it in the past is the money to build a new road comes out of either reserves or is in the budget. Grant money comes out of reserves. This creates a fund that, over time, can accumulate so that when we have issues like this, or let's say we have an issue with a road and industrial park, we will have an alternative funding mechanism rather than coming back to council and saying, you know, "Please give us the money we need for this." What this would do is take 30% of fee revenue and put it in the capital projects account and 15% into the economic development account. This starts slowly and gradually builds up over time. And again, my point here was just to put this in your hands and get you thinking about this. I will consult with the acting administrator. I think the most appropriate course from here is to get with the new Economic Development Committee Chairman, discuss this with them, perhaps take this to the committee if he thinks that's the appropriate way, and to bring this back to the full council with the committee's endorsement.
That was going to be my exact suggestion, is let's start it out in committee and then let it work its way back here so we have some input on that. I would ask both you, and I'll make the committee appointments now that we have the positions done, but I would ask you and the committee to consider some of the NOCEMs that we've run into, and that is the demand on public safety and the demand on infrastructure in general, such as our recycling centers and things have... We had 25 times in one month the demand for fire services in the industry. Is that right, Tommy? And then we've heard that our recycling center has almost doubled in what's coming through. And so I think we have to be cognizant of... I know NOCM is not a great word, but you know, you just didn't see that one until it demanded those demands. So I think we need to keep that on board and address that as we move through this so that we can better address. I'm all for economic development, but we can't... We've got to make sure that those infrastructure services remain intact or we won't continue to have...
Economic development does not happen in a vacuum.
That is correct.
It impacts the community in a lot of ways, in NOCM-type ways.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any other questions from any of the council persons?
Well, I know we talked about this in several meetings back when we still had an administrator, and it was brought up at that time, I guess, about the capital projects and part of it going to the economic. I haven't had time to read this, so...
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I don't know what all would be considered under the capital projects because at the time we talked, we were talking about public safety and, you know, the things they need, you know, the high-dollar, high-ticket items that they need. It's very hard for us to come about, so...
It is, it is.
I wanted to be sure that we have the ability...
Yes, ma'am.
What's our ability under the capital project account? So is it defined in here what our...
Yes, it is. It defines what we could do. It pretty much gives the council the authority to, at its discretion, acquire, construct, maintain, repair, renovate, or outfit capital projects in Newberry. So it's pretty wide open.
And what I understood, this will only start with all the new fee-in lieu?
Actually, this would start with the projects that have located in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park since 2016.
So it will not affect our fee-in-lose up until what's starting for this year?
Well, that's all in the details at that time.
That's what I thought, you know, what I remembered.
May have some amendments.
It's kind of like we're starting new with anything that's put into it will go towards these accounts.
One thing this does do is it outlines a specific solar project that was passed last year, and it would commit 100% of those revenues to the Economic Development Fund if that project does in fact happen. And the rationale behind that is it would be a significant sum of money. And bear in mind that a solar farm doesn't send any children to school. So there are no school expenses involved with the solar farm.
Well, I'll read this in great detail, and so I'll understand it better. But I knew we had talked about it, and that's what I thought this was coming up. Excited to see us doing something for the future and not waiting and then saying, "Where's the money going to come from?"
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else before we let him sit down? Thank you so much for the report, sir. Item number six on our agenda is more good news with an update on the ambulance remounts and consideration of additional funding from Tommy and Crystal.
Okay, so this is going to kind of tag on what you've already been discussing, but we're here tonight to request additional funding for two ambulance remounts. One was being purchased under lease purchase and one under ARPA funding. Our vendor has advised of the increase in prices, not only on some of the equipment that's going to be on these trucks, but also the cost of the chassis has basically skyrocketed. So we're here tonight to ask for an additional $69,191.43 to cover this increase on these two vehicles that we're in desperate need of replacing or updating. And I know y'all probably got some questions. However, I'll try to answer them. Me or Crystal, one will try to answer those questions that you may have. And I know Chairman Johnson was in a meeting with... We were discussing fire trucks the other day, and we was kind of explaining the same situation going on with fire vehicles. Having problems even getting chassis to build vehicles is a struggle right now. So when some become available, they're a lot more expensive than what the vendor initially thought was going to be the case. So that's what we're presenting here tonight to get approval to move forward with that so we can get these vehicles in the process of being rebounded for us.
What was in the original budget for that amount?
Let me just clarify too, that the amount that we're requesting for the two is $70,220.93.
Okay, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think that's what's in your packet.
So the original budget was $200,000 for the EMS truck, and I had thought it was $225 on the rescue truck. However, I was told later that that was changed by the administrator to 200. But that's what the original budget was.
That's right. EMS was $200,000 budgeted in 2023, and then it was $200,000 for the rescue squad, which is Newberry Rescue Squad. Was budgeted for Newberry Rescue Squad. And the lease purchase.
Yep. The rescue truck was being paid for with the ARPA funds, and the EMS truck was being paid for with the lease purchase. Now, I guess I will decide on how you're going to... What funding source you're going to use to make up the difference on these two trucks, whether you're going to take it out of a fund balance or ARPA funding.
The additional funding you're requesting is $70,220, is that it?
$220.
Is that for both?
That's right.
Right.
It would be $21,320.03 for the EMS shortage and 40... Excuse me.
And I'm not questioning you per se. I'm questioning in the process. We'd already issued a purchase order. I thought about this on the...
That's right.
...with Tommy the other day. At what point can they... Are we not bound by this, just saying, "Oh, by the way, the cost went up again and again"? I mean, this could go on forever.
It's the... Yeah, it will. It certainly will. And I think, as Tommy has been told and the vendors expressed to us, that it's a three-year wait now on new ambulances. So they can't really... Once we budget for a price for a new ambulance, it's going to change by the time the ambulance is actually delivered.
It's crazy times right now.
There's nothing... Issue in the purchase order to them, the notice to proceed, but as they indicated, if we didn't move with this, we were going to lose the chassis. And, you know...
That was my next question. Didn't I understand they were going to sell it to somebody else?
They were.
They would easily be able to get rid of it, believe me. They got...
And this all transposed laws out. They kind of forced our hand at, you know, "Do you want it or not? We need to get the money for the chassis." And that's what we did. We paid for the chassis.
I couldn't hear you.
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
Wow.
That was done the day... The next day.
I guess when you hold all the cards, you can start making...
It was a revolving door.
What I don't understand, if we've got a purchase order, that's a binding contract, is it not?
It is to a certain extent, I would think. I mean, unless, you know, they could re... Reneg on it, at the point of which is what they did, basically.
Joni, are you... I see your head. Can you kind of chime in and tell us? Uh, and again, I'm not, it it, we gotta, we gotta get ambulances, but I just want to know where we are. So we don't keep running into this.
I'd like to see the verbiage that we've got on there, but I think it was Mr. Hip said that's a binding contract. It it certainly is and and to reneg on that is a breach. I mean, that's contract 101. But I'd I would prefer to see the the actual language that's that's on there if I could.
Okay.
The equipment was, the quotes for the equipment is like, if we issued a purchase order today, they're only good for 30 days.
Okay.
That's that's one thing Tommy and I noticed during this debacle.
And and all of this is equipment, correct?
Well, this chassis is the the body of the ambulance.
Do y'all have a copy of that in?
Yes, we have it now.
Okay, if you look where it says striker equipment, striker equipment is what Debbie's referring to, the striker equipment.
Yes.
Which are not exactly the same because the EMS truck is getting two items of equipment and rescue is getting three, so that's why you see a difference in the pricing. That is for the stretcher and the cot on one truck and a stretcher and cot and a Lucas device, which does automatic CPR on the rescue truck. That's why you see a difference in the equipment cost.
And and please know that I I love public safety and I I hope that I prove that I want to stand with you. I'm just trying to protect the county from getting bled dry over this changing prices process.
Yeah, that is there no end to it. I mean, if we're talking about a contract, to me, that becomes binding when they agree to it and we agree to it. And then they are either reneg on the contract or require, they can come back and ask for additional funds, but we're not obligated to do it. But they are, well, I think Joni needs to look at the wording.
I think what I'm hearing is they bid it and we issued a purchase order on the bid. There was never a contract between us.
That's right. And they may have some verbiage in their solicitation that that states otherwise as well.
And that would be my question too, Mr. Chairman. Was there in addition to a purchase order, was there a purchase agreement or even an RFP or an RFQ that we issued that made binding language in it as well?
I can certainly let you take a look at it.
Okay.
There there are some front end documents that I put in front of the specifications that spell out certain things. But as far as holding them to it when it comes down and then we don't get it. I mean, I understand what you're saying with the pricing and how it, you know, could bust the county. But in the end, we do need the ambulances.
If we wait, we're gonna lose them.
We're gonna lose some, but.
We've already spent the money on the chassis and it's not refundable.
Yep, so we're not gonna get money back.
On this particular one, going forward, there may be something that could be changed in the language.
I I would love for Joni to be involved in those in the in the future so that we can try to lock. I mean, we talked to that fire truck guy the other day. He said the fire truck went up $40,000 in two months.
The attorney that had, the previous attorney did review the solicitation before they go out.
Gotcha.
He he did, all of them.
So when you actually purchase, purchase those things, do they not have a certain amount of time to deliver?
They, we can't, when they respond on for fire and rescue, they they do say it's depending on when they receive the chassis. So it's not a matter of, you know, you got 60 or 90 to 120 days to provide it. They can't, they can't comply with that.
I think you're gonna find that in all pieces of equipment.
A lot of this equipment, I mean, you just can't go to a dealership and buy it. I mean, they're building you a custom and so, I mean, they they do kind of have you.
It's the same.
Yes.
Let me ask that, what are there any other pieces of equipment that's out there that's we've not taken possession of that we may come up with the same problem? Or will this finalize?
You're talking about like other departments or just this?
Just that department.
I don't think so.
Well, no, in the FY 2223, y'all did appropriate $300,000 for an engine. I foresee that to be.
But we haven't bid it out.
We haven't bid it out, nor have we done the brush truck, but those are two biggies.
Well, we got two brush trucks that's been ordered, but they same problem, we're waiting on chassis on both of those.
And the hospital has one.
So it's just, it's gonna keep coming up.
Yep.
We'll have to let Joni look through what we do have and what's out there for the future.
Yeah, because I think I I'm looking at it, short term, we're blessed that we've got some ARPA money that we could use to associate this with. Long term, when we create a budget, I mean, we can figure a price for an ambulance in in March or May of this year when we do our budget. And by August of the next year, there's no telling what the number would look like, so.
This was bid back in March of 2022.
Gotcha.
And you can see on the spreadsheet, it was $160,000 for the remount and the new price went up to 182,000. So that was a $20,000.
We even looked at purchasing some of the equipment on our own rather than including it in the bid. Then you're looking at paying sales tax additionally on that equipment rather than the flat cap on the ambulance, $500.
Yeah. Would both of these items be able to use the ARPA money? So that would.
What is our budget, our balance on the ARPA funds?
Just over 5 million. Or it was the other day unless it's changed. Okay, so it's just over 5 million.
5 million 3. I'm sorry, you didn't hear me.
You was close.
Yep.
Have we committed any of the of that ARPA funding to any other?
That is the uncommitted portion is what I would.
But we had, would plan to use part of that to help with the the new jail.
Yeah.
Correct?
Nothing committed there.
The only thing.
It's not been committed, but.
The only thing y'all probably talked about, the only thing we have committed in the capital was the engine and a brush truck and the hospital remount and some ES EMS life packs. We give $70,000 to the public defender, 70 to the solicitors and 92,000 for the broadband.
We have 5 million 379 currently available. That includes the 188,000 that we got for the tribal ARPA funds. We also get another 188,000 dollars possibly July.
January.
January, excuse me, to add to that. If that's where you decide you want to put those funds, those not being determined that it has to be part of ARPA, but those funds right now are included. We had to deposit those into account, keep them separate.
Yeah.
Because it was part of ARPA, but it's tribal funds, we just included them in that. So should you decide to separate them, we can separate that out.
And that's because we have Sault Ste. National Forest.
Yeah, yeah.
What is our our settlement on the opioid? How much are we getting from that?
We have that on our list to do, but we have not received any, any number. Because we have people that have are inquiring about it, but we don't know how much of that is gonna be for us.
And we're limited on what we can spend that far too. It has to be prevention of drug related and opioids. So I think we had targeted that to redo part of the jail sheriff's part back there.
We can check on that and see. We we, to my knowledge, we've not received any funds for that lawsuit.
Are there any other questions? I think we almost gotta hold our nose and get two ambulances while we can get them is what I think, so.
We can't, we can't lose them.
Is there a motion that we?
Use the ARPA.
You put ARPA funds to do this? Is that your motion, Mr. Shealy?
We use ARPA funds to fund the remaining balance.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second by Ms. Airwood, is there discussion?
Certainly, we still need our attorney.
Yes.
To look and give us some, not only advice on this specific, but going forward.
Going forward.
And to make sure that we don't.
Absolutely.
Well, according, that's right, according to what Debbie said, we got a fire engine and a brush truck and probably some other equipment too for other departments that we're gonna be facing the same thing.
And and just as part of discussion, that fellow that Tommy and I and all the chiefs we're meeting with, was they do have a fixed pricing option now, obviously. You you're playing the game, you know, you're, they're guessing they're gonna make money by not going up any more than that and we're guessing that it could be more and so we're gonna save money. So there is a roll of the dice even with fixed pricing, so, to a certain extent.
But we got our items.
Yes, absolutely. You know what it's gonna cost. You don't have to keep going back through it. Right, we have a motion and a second on the floor and we've had discussion. A call to question, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next is the consideration of the funding, a local cash max for the Community Development Block grant to construct a sidewalk along Subertown Road and Gary Street. It says in the town, actually most of it is in the county, but some of it does go into the town. Council had already approved this in a previous meeting, so now it's just a decision of what funding source to use. And did y'all have recommendations for us, is that correct?
We, in your briefing, we said contingency.
Okay.
It has a 130,000 in, but that would, what we want to make sure is we get a purchase order for that so we can encumber it that we don't spend it twice.
Okay. Are there questions about that from council?
And again, how much was that?
Um, yes.
Would there be a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader, is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Are there appointments tonight? Hearing none, public comments, I lost my sheet. Nobody has signed up for public comments, is anybody here that wanted to make public comments that didn't sign up? Hearing none, now item number 10 on our agenda is an executive session. The executive session is subject to section, code section 30 dash 4 dash 70 subsection A, section 2 of the South Carolina Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended 1976. And we are going into executive session for two matters related to contractual arrangements and pending litigation. So is there a motion we go into executive session? There's a motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, that motion carries unanimously. Because our attorney is zoomed in tonight, unfortunately, we're gonna have to ask you all to be the ones to leave tonight. Usually we leave, but we need her, so I am sorry to have to ask you to leave. If you don't come back, if you don't stay around, we thank you for coming and appreciate what you do for Newberry County. Yes, here.
Oh, thanks, sir.
I I've got one quick thing, but you can hear it. I don't care if you hear it. In fact, it probably relates to you in a small matter, small way.
This, my dear friend, is for you. I believe Curry-Chips Road would be your contingency.
It is ours.
Although I've gotten an earful about it from about three different times. Go back up here. All right. All right, is there a motion that we come out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Any discussion and all in favor by show of hands? Opposed likewise. Is there a motion based on our executive session?
I make a motion that we give the administrator the authority to disburse the grant funds for the AT&amp;T Economic Development.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? There's a second by Mr. Sees. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. And opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Comments or requests from the Aglin County Administrator?
I've given you most of a brief discussion of some things. The Comp and Class Plan, I was sent from Mr. John with MAG. The market survey from other agencies for the benchmark positions has been completed. Overall, the county is lagging behind in the market and adjustments are anticipated. The questionnaires were completed by at least 106 employees of the county for the 99 positions. They were very pleased with the participation from the employees to get that information back. And then they are now doing what's called the Aging the Market Data, integrating it with the Employment Cost Index for public administration, the Consumer Price Index, and the adjustment for Social Security. There's some information they are still asking for us to complete, which is an Excel spreadsheet on all of our employees. And we need to update in case there has been a change or a change in salary. We do have one that was changed from the time they started with the operations manager. The facilities operations manager has come in in place of the facilities we had before. That salary has changed. So to get any updates to that information. Once they receive that, they anticipate that they will have for internal staff review by the end of January. And then once those reviews are done to identify the grade levels and the questions that they may have that still need to be answered, they will give us back the full scope with the projected cost of implementation. So hopefully by, I would say if they're sending this back to us by the end of January, we hope to have that, the full, possibly by the second meeting in February, to be able to present to you what the implementation costs will be. As for the Comp and Class Plan, I emailed with Katie earlier today. The elements of the comprehensive plan are at various stages in the process. Those currently being reviewed by stakeholders are population, cultural, and housing. Transportation is under staff review. There are drafts in progress for economic development, natural resources, community facilities, priority investments, and resilience. The land use element is in draft stage. A work session will be scheduled later, possibly within a few weeks, for council and the planning commission to draft the new future land use map. So that work is still in progress. It is not near completion yet, but they continue to work as Katie is working along with the others. And the last one I had, I was going to give you was the ARPA funds that are available so that you have that number. Currently, including the funds that came for the tribal funds, we have available $5,379,172. That is funds that has not been committed. We have funds that are committed for a fire engine, a brush truck, the ambulance remount you heard about earlier today, and EMS life pack. The Public Defender, $70,000. Those have been committed and taken away from the beginning ballots, but they have not been completed at this point. So it's on time and we'll need to discuss how we want to allocate the ARPA funds so that we can get them dedicated for the purpose we're going to use them for. To my knowledge, that's all I have.
What an outstanding report. And we appreciate the efforts of both of you. Y'all are doing a great job for us, standing in the gap. And it's noticed and appreciated.
I've got one question.
Okay.
Now, I thought I heard Tommy say something about two brush trucks when he was up there talking.
One was to be funded.
Okay, okay.
But those two brush trucks were already in the budget, correct?
There's one in this one and the ARPA funds, but the other one was a lease purchase.
It was on lease purchase.
Okay, thanks for...
But they just haven't been, the process hasn't taken place for the procurement of them yet.
We'll hear about those later.
Yeah, if they can find them. Yeah, but now they can't find them.
That's right.
It just don't exist to get.
It's a very difficult process.
Yes. The guy from the fire service, I won't chase this far, but the guy from the fire company was saying that some counties are just allocating the money and voting to spend it. And as soon as a truck comes up, they laying a check down at that moment to get it. And the vendors are giving them first preference because they got cash in hand. I'm not sure that's a good way to do business for a county, but sometimes it is what it is.
Money talk.
Yeah, that's right.
We have an issue as well with the dump truck. Is a dump truck...
It's a mini, no, it's a dump truck.
It's a dump truck for public works that we can't get our hands on either. And the money was already in lease purchase, we still can't get it.
Heavy equipment is sad.
That money has to be spent within two years, not two more years.
And I don't think we've seen the worst of it yet. Comments from council members? Mr. Shealy? Mr. Sees, you kind of got baptized by fire a little bit tonight. Welcome aboard. Do you have any comments?
Glad to be here, working with everybody. Looking forward to it.
Yes, sir. Ms. Airwood?
New year, new first meeting, so here we are. We've got lots of work to do this year, and here we go.
Reverend Curry?
Well, it's a new year, new ideas. I just want to remind council, one thing about our purchasing agency, all of us going to be growing up during the year.
Oh, yeah.
Don't care what you buy, a pair of shoes or airplane. It's not the same thing you pay your order for. So we want to pay ourselves to go forward in a good way. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reader?
I just want to go back on what you said earlier about O'Neill Church. I think we need to start looking into the future. And it's going, we're going to start having some homeless issues in Newbury.
Yes.
And we probably going to have to do something to help those individuals. Because even working with the school district, I see kids coming in frequently. People moving to Newbury out of the blue, have nowhere to live, and they looking for the school district or somebody to help them out. Put them up in a hotel or something. So I think we're going to have to eventually, we have to, for any excess buildings that we have, we need to start looking at trying to create a homeless shelter. Because it's going to be desperate need. Or we're going to have a lot of people living out on the streets like New York and Washington and places like that. And also, people need to, I don't know if you've been looking at the news as far as this COVID thing is. The numbers in Newbury County is really high. We're one of the highest counties in the state. So we have to start taking care of ourselves a lot more and look into whether this mask thing need to go back. We need to go back to the mask thing. Because looking at Newbury Hospital, they have a lot of people out there that has gotten COVID and apparently it's a new variant that has come out. Also, MLK is going to be on the 15th and 16th of January. A parade is listed for the 15th to be at 2:30, and that's on Sunday. Sunday the 15th at 2:30 is the parade. And the marching program will be on the 16th, starting at 9:30. Marching from Miller Chapel to Bethlehem with the program at Bethlehem at 10 o'clock.
Appreciate that reminder and those comments. And I failed to say congratulations to both of you as well on being sworn back into council. And we appreciate both of you so very much.
Yeah, and I want to remind you, I actually started law school today.
Congratulations.
And I missed my first class.
Oh. He's off to a blaze. See, he comes dressed for the success. Mr. Hip?
Not anything other than, you know, we've got a lot of challenges this year. We've already had the first meeting of the new year, and we've already been challenged with how much money we're going to have to come up with. So we are, we got a tough job for this year.
It's going to be a difficult budget process and a difficult year. No question about it. Nobody deserves better than our employees. And there's nobody better than the employees of Newbury County. But I think it's going to shock our conscience when we see some of those numbers come through on what we need to do. So we're going to, but we need to commit to doing something to help our employees. So we'll get through that. All right, future meetings. The Newbury County Works, Council Work Session, that is the update on that plan.
The Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Yes.
They have the draft and we'd like to bring it to you. We'll have it in advance, so you'll be able to review it. We'd like to be able to be here to give you the explanations of what is presented in the plan.
And that's going to be at 5:00, is that what you said?
That is for you to determine. Rick did think it would be best for an hour.
Okay. I'd rather give an hour and not need it than...
Before the meeting.
Than run into the next meeting and, yeah. All right, so that will be at 5:00. And then we'll have our regular county council meeting at 6:00. And then our Public Safety Committee will be meeting on January 30th, which means the chair has got to get busy and make committee appointments so that we know who those folks are.
And you will determine the time at that, for this meeting? Or do you set the time for this meeting prior?
Which one?
The Public Safety Committee.
Six, all our meetings are at 6:00 unless otherwise noted, unless somebody wants to change them. I like the 6 o'clock meeting myself.
Sound good.
Anybody good with that? Okay, sounds good. Nick? Makes a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second? I don't think we can do that. Second, my Ms. Airwood. All in favor by show of hands? Opposed likewise, we stand adjourned.